Good morning, welcome to the City Griffin Board of Commissioners workshop meeting, March twenty-sixth. We're glad to have all of our guests and staff with us today. First item is a presentation of the countywide emergency emergency operations plans. Spalding County EMA Director Chief Glenn Polk will address. Welcome Chief Polk.
Good morning, y'all. Thank y'all so much for the opportunity to come and share with you about our emergency operations plan update that is required every four years from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. For those of you who may not know, our emergency operation plan is the foundation framework for all of our interaction between our agencies and jurisdictions that may be affected by any emergency disasters in Spalding County. And it just provides a relationship and a understanding of what the government, business, nonprofits, all the people that come together in a disaster response do, and it kind of lays out that framework and how we all integrate and work together. So today's, all the jurisdictions, we asked for approval through those resolutions, just to move forward and and then we'll provide interesting things to go through the next four years, the next one.
So is there anything you need to present at this point?
I did provide a, and I just, just need signatures on that and then we'll add it to the plan and get it back to you since once we have, we've already had Spalding County sign and still have the city of Water Hill, but they'll be next on the agenda.
Mayor, this is something we looked at based on the state statute, that it's not something that you have to approve because you don't have emergency management. The county, the county handles that as a countywide service, but we did feel since we were signing it, you needed to see it and make sure that you understood what we were signing.
Did the commissioners have comments or anything? Let me tell you personally and from our city, thank you for your service to our community, watching you and Chief Bird, how you all worked on the response of the tornado from January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. It was an unbelievable response. I was like in awe in regard to how prepared you as well as the city and the county personnel were and just, we're blessed and very fortunate to have you leading the team.
Well, thank you for your support. We do, we're very blessed in our community to have the folks we have to come together in these times.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Chief.
Item two is discuss policy proposal for replacement signage honoring local high school sports championships in city rideways. We've got Staff Attorney Kelsey Carden, Public Works Director, Ms. Eller to address. Welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
There we go. So this has actually come up because we had received a request that enlightened us that we may not have everything figured out when it comes to school, the school sports championship signage. So I know that you guys have seen a lot about signage and renaming and honoring certain individuals within the city over the last year. We have adopted the street renaming and honorary street designation ordinance. This is for renaming of streets as well as the honorary signage that would go up where it doesn't officially rename the street, but it honors an individual who meets the requirement of that policy. And then we also have our policy for honorary naming of city facilities and erection of plaques, monuments, and markers. And those are more, so some of the the signage that we have downtown, the, any other, you know, plaques or monuments or the naming of the police department, for example. But these policies explicitly excluded and did not apply to school championship honoring school championships. And part of the reason for that is because we did not want to have an extremely cumbersome process. Obviously, you have a championship win and something we wanted to be able to honor very quickly, so that's part of the reason for excluding it. But we did realize that we received a request recently for a school championship that was actually for an individual win for, for golf. And so that brought up, you know, there are other sports where we may have individual wins and eventually we may start having some overcrowding of our right of way. So we wanted to come to you to say, we do believe that we need a policy with regard to these, but we want to make sure that it's not cumbersome and that it is efficient and that we aren't causing any delay in making sure, you know, in presenting these honors to the students who who do receive them. So our recommendation at this point is that we create a policy request for this type of signage. Signage are made by a commissioner or by the Griffin Spalding Board of Education. Upon delivery of that request to GIS, it would be a very limited review process where GIS would essentially communicate and work with public works for the creation and the erection of that sign as well as logging it into our system, because that is the most important part of that, of that signage. And part of the reason why we started looking at these policies and making sure we had a process in place, because during the storms, we realized that FEMA has an expectation that we give GPS coordinates that we know how much the sign costs when it was last replaced, when it was put up, if it's ever been taken down, et cetera. So upon delivery of that to GIS, they're going to coordinate with public works and they're going to log that into our system. The requests meeting the policy requirements are then going to be granted, or our recommendation is that they be granted as a matter of course, meaning it's not something where we have to come to the board and say, grant a resolution allowing us to make this signage. It would automatically be granted for a championship win. However, there would be a presentation likely at a workshop similar to what we did for the Lady Bears this past year. However, this would, our recommendation is that it is only applying to actual championship wins, so it would not qualify for any runner-up wins or anything of that nature. So I'm going to hand some things off to Marisa to discuss the types of signage as well as location and some of the concerns and where we're going to need advisement from you guys on how to handle these requests.
So that map shows our current locations and then those streets listed out. It actually comes up to a total of eleven signs that are around our city currently. So our, our question right now is how, how should we proceed with, with these signage requests for individual championships such as golf or swim? And just to give you an example of what the signage could look like, the first example is similar to what we have for the Lady Bears. And our recommendation for that type of signage would be that the signage would remain up for five years. So if, if they got that championship at their freshman year, it would be all throughout their high school year and then a year after. And then as far as locations for that signage, we would, we would utilize the current locations we have now, which is eleven locations. The second type of signage would be a combined signage. So it would be Spalding High and Griffin High together. And that could last longer than that five-year period. It would not crowd the right of way. And then our location recommendations, it is for North Hill Street, Devlin Road, Memorial Drive, and Merryweather Street, and this is an example of what that signage could potentially look like. So I guess our main question right now is how, how should we proceed with those individual championships?
And how many locations are you recommending?
For this type of signage, we are recommending only four locations because that signage is a lot bigger than just doing the individual signs. And we tried to hit like the main corridors around our city, so it could be the feeling down inside on to these, the combined signage is the honoring individuals would be a bit more difficult. So if you can, if you put to the so as you can see, it would show the high school, it would show the sport, and it would show the year. It's, we're not identifying the specific type of championship or, you know, whether it was triple A, quad A, you know, anything along those lines. And it would be very difficult to identify an individual, or it may just look very awkward to identify an individual, because you can't just put, you know, Griffin High Golf, twenty, you know, twenty twenty-four, because for golf, the golf team may not have won the championship that year. It may have been just that individual, and so it would just be golf, that individual's name and the year. And that can look a little awkward, you know, in that, in that lineup. There's also a possibility that the spread for wins may not be even. And so to the extent that, you know, visually or aesthetically, it would bother you to have multiple wins from Griffin High lined up.
It wouldn't bother me at all.
A large green bar. I, I, that I understand aesthetically, from an aesthetic perspective. If you had four green bars lined up and then, you know, one, you know, blue one actually lined up before we had a bunch more from Griffin High, if that is going to aesthetically, you know, be a problem, that's something we wanted to bring up as well. The alternative, the other option is what we currently do, which is our sign, similar to what we did for the Lady Bears. It was the same type of signage. We do have those up at eleven locations right now. We utilize the same eleven locations to be able to differentiate the sign we can take it out.
My, my, and I don't know if you finished or you ready for comments with that. But I like the eleven locations that we have now. I think this right here would be great for the individuals, these four locations that highlighted if there was an individual winner. So if the Griffin High School Swim Team won the state or Spalding High School Swim Team won the state, it would be one of those eleven signs, but these four signs would be for an individual winning the wrestling or the golf. Isn't that, even though we want to believe that we win every year, we're the best and we're supposed to win every year. It's very rare. It, it doesn't happen often. It's not something, and I hope it's a problem we run into that we win it all the time, but you competing against a lot, a lot, a lot of other schools, athletes. So when we pull these off, it, it is something worthy of being noted. So I, I would say my personal, just looking at it and without any input from anyone else, I think the signage for the individual, the fourth, so that way you can get more and their names will be, you can put just that person's name, that male, female's name, athlete on the sign in those four locations, but for the team locations, then we would do the same way we've been doing it.
So for clarity, are, are you wanting the same type of sign like we did for the Lady Bears where it shows the, the sport, the name, the school, and the championship that they won for the individual, but it would be placed at one of these four locations? And then the other locations would, would continue to have those, the, the team sport signs. It would essentially be where we're locating them.
Right.
But you would still pick option one for all of the signage?
That, that would be, that would be me.
Okay.
Then the four, the location for the fourth would be where you can list them all individually.
Okay, so you would, you would want them listed rather than on their own individual sign?
No, see these signs right here where you have golf twenty twenty-three? I would mean, my, my preference would be Joey Tinsley, state champion, golf state champion, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay, in four locations, like, just like what you got up there right now. For the state golf tournament winners, is all the eleven, just like we've been doing it.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
And individuals would be combined by school.
There you go.
By school like these, like option two.
Right.
And for
Now that's just me saying.
How many signs are we talking about that are currently within that five-year window of championships? Teams besides the lady, lady girls?
That is the only one there is, and it's Spalding High. I want to say it was football, but that's
No.
That was a region.
And for, for clarity, those eleven, is there a sign at all, eleven of those locations for those wins?
So what, what we currently have up there is the Griffin High Track Team and the Griffin High Girls Basketball Team and the Spalding High School Girls Basketball Team that won in twenty eighteen. And I think the track was twenty, is this on the sign as well?
So on the five-year policy, right now, then we would only have the Lady, Lady Jags right now.
Lady Bears, Lady Bears. Right, was two thousand eighteen, I think.
Are you, are we comfortable with the five years?
Yeah, that's fantastic. We can place the sign at the, always put a sign in the hall of fame or send it back to the school.
So in terms of the four locations, so that sign doesn't look empty? Is there a way to get those, because it's, it's located at the same place the, the current signs are at in terms of the gateways?
That was, that was going to be mine next.
So could we put the lady, the teams on this one with the individuals?
Don't forget, you've got a couple of locations that are on state highways. So depending on how big it gets, you're going to have GDOT permitting and everything else, and you've got a visual issue with drivers if you combine everything on one, potentially, but if it's going to be every five years, then I don't know, it's hard to say hopefully not.
Say, say that there's an entrance way that you're preferring to put the taller sign, you've got one person's name on that one, and then on the welcomes the Griffin sign, you've got these other team sports listed. Why not put the team sports on these gateway signs?
Because they're on all eleven.
Just, just on the
That, that's what we're asking. We need a consensus from you all if you want them on four or eleven.
We would put everyone on those. We would have this one sign and another set of signs on the welcome the Griffin sign.
I don't know if this was, I said it earlier.
It's not. That's two different opinions, so we need to know what the consensus is. That's why we're stuck and why we're here.
So what are you saying? Say it again, so we can move on?
I, I need to see which streets you're talking about. Go back to the streets, what streets you're talking about for the four signs. Do you look at North Hill Street? Devlin Road? Memorial Drive and Merryweather Street? So Merryweather Street. So those four streets right now have signs recognizing teams.
Well, actually, you've got eleven streets that have signs.
Those intersections that you're referring to put the taller sign at. My, my question is, do we want to have signs on the welcome the Griffins signs as they are and then have this taller sign recognizing the individual? Or can we put those signs on this taller version in one location instead of two locations?
And it may not have to be this tall. I think this was, that was an example of it being filled, obviously, but the, you know, it may, it may not be that tall, but to, to Mayor's point, there are currently four of the eleven do currently have the, the four that we're talking about putting individuals on, so really you would go down to seven honoring the teams and then four, according to your recommendation, would be honoring the individuals.
Well, I think, I think we can combine that. We can do the four, the, the eleven that honors the team. And within that eleven, four that come on these streets right here, honoring the individuals. I think that would probably be the best.
You have a remark on option two, says honoring championship wins for longer than the five-year period.
Yes, that's the way that the signage is currently structured. You see how they're, you know, you could have two thousand eight and you could just build onto it, but there's more limited information on these signs compared to, you know, the, an individual's name, the type of championship, you know, whether it's individual or a team, et cetera. This is just school team identification, the sport and the year. And so these would stack up and you could honor them for longer than the five-year period. But if we are adding more, more detail, which our current signs do have, we would recommend keeping those up only for five years because they're much larger than the individual banner, smaller banner signs that can get attached.
Right now, there are three state championship signs per location currently.
And two of those would be removed according to this policy because of the age.
I, I, I don't, I think the removal part is not a, as long as you take those tethered signs, donate them back to the schools, I think they would love, love to have them in a trophy case. And I think that's a, a great idea. And you, you may get I was passing somewhere and I saw Ray Field Wright saying, I don't know if that's, are we, did we do that? Ray Field Wright, I want your tires.
That's, yeah.
Okay, all right. I just, I just saw one of those the other day and wondered what it's not, but okay. Yeah, I, I like that idea if everybody else.
We have the four ones that have the individuals and the teams, and then the other seven will have team, and it's for a five-year period from the time of the championship.
One, one last, because I don't understand. So the, the place that you want for four with individuals and teams, you want the big tall sign or you want them each to have their own sign?
The taller sign with the, with the stat, which they have the Lady Jags basketball team, you'd have the individual person golf.
Okay.
And then, but right now, there are going to be two
On that.
Two on that one.
And you said we have on each of them. State and golf.
In twenty twenty-two from Spalding High.
We get the
We want, then we want it, that's what we want.
Eliminate the oldest one first.
At, at five years.
Five years.
Okay.
It'll, it'll, you know, which
All of this contingent upon GDOT approval for some of those roads.
So
Because even for, I will say that the taller sign, it is intended to stack for longer than five years. That's part of the design.
You can bring it down lower.
Yes, yes, but you can bring it down lower, but these there was, so you're saying there would be four of these signs, banner-style signs honoring the individuals and the sports team at, at these four locations, and then the other locations would remain the same. Yes. But the other locations would remain the same as they currently are, with the exception of how long those signs stay up.
Is that a yes from? Yes.
That, I mean
I think that
Can you make that work? Okay.
I mean, I know some of y'all not from Griffin High School, y'all not understanding what we're really talking about here. You know, if you went to Woodward Academy or Pike County, you don't really understand. Or Jackson, you know, all these, Alabama, wherever y'all from, y'all don't understand the problem that Ms. Ward and I are talking about.
We do understand. That's why we're bringing it to you because we're getting requests. And so we need to know what direction you want to move because we need to be able to be consistent with what we present. And so this is our recommendation.
Okay, we'll take Scott's recommendation.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. As soon as he's decision over there, good job.
And you'll see.
Thank you, ladies. Item three is discuss the regulations and creation of an ordinance for food trucks, mobile food vendors within the city of Griffin. Food, kind of ordinance planning development director Jacob Jacobs, tax and licensing administrator Karen Bennett, and principal planner Cheryl Haynes will address. Welcome.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. So we're back to talk about food trucks. So we've been working very hard on this. Obviously, Ms. Karen Bennett with tax and licensing, Michelle Haynes, principal planner, myself. We've been having a number of meetings, doing a lot of research. We met with the city manager and the mayor and just trying to kind of pull together something. We're going to give you guys at the end of this some highlights of a very draft ordinance that we've already started pulling together. Looked at a number of different communities to kind of borrow from, but before we get to that point, we do kind of want to back up, kind of show you a little bit of kind of how we've gotten to this point. So rough timeline, so back, actually five years ago to the day, Tucson actually gave a presentation with respect to food trucks and kind of bringing the idea up. And I think there was a potential ordinance at that time. Some things were kind of kicked around and nothing really materialized from that. And then moving forward in time, we actually had a workshop with y'all roughly about this time last year, March twenty-eighth, and then we did a town hall a couple of months later on May sixteenth, where we met with some folks within the community, business owners, concerned citizens, things of that nature. We met over at a historic city hall, got some input and feedback from those folks. We're actually going to summarize that briefly this morning with y'all as well. And so, and then we're here this morning to talk about it again. So some similar-sized communities or communities that are around us that have put ordinances on the books since roughly about twenty seventeen, we've got seven that we're showing from here, and actually we've looked at a number of these. So, you know, Thompson, Stockbridge, Spalding, City of Platon, Alpharetta. Alpharetta is one that we've looked very hard at and actually borrowed extensively from their language. So there, there's a number of communities around us that have put language on the books, and I think that it's, it's definitely time for us to get some language on the books as well, because we're, this is something that we get a lot of inquiries on. Couple of things want to be, make sure that we, we don't kind of get into right now. What we're going to be discussing this morning with y'all is just essentially food trucks themselves, the operation and the permitting of food trucks at, at individual locations. So there are other things that kind of tie into this as well, food trucks as they plan a special event hosted through the city or, or other types of events or a food truck courts. We're not talking about those right now. That'll be verbiage that we do need to revisit our special event language, dress that up. That, that's another amendment that we'll be bringing forth to y'all at, at a future date, a very near future date. And then the same thing with food truck courts. We kind of want to see how this plays out with respect to looking at these on an individual basis and then start to look at some language to where we can start addressing food truck courts and kind of looking at these in a greater capacity. So we just want to make sure that we're kind of clear with that, that we're just purely looking at the food trucks or what we are proposing to call as mobile food vendors. That's what we're seeing largely in a lot of this language.
So just a refresher of how things are with food trucks. We do not, the reason we're here today, we do not currently have an ordinance for food trucks. The Department of Public Health requires compliance with local authorities and their ordinances. The base of operation is permitted, so Department of Public Health will permit, give the food service permit to the base of operations. They'll also inspect and permit the mobile unit and then our local Spalding County, for instance, their health department will issue a letter of authorization when a food truck is in our community. So from House Bill fourteen forty-three, there's a lot of words here. So it basically became effective last January first. The, we'll flip over to just kind of like a briefing points of note from House Bill fourteen forty-three. The food truck is no longer required to obtain a food service permit from every county's health department. So before, it was very costly for food trucks. I think we have a few food trucks here today who could account for this, that each of, each time they wanted to set up in a community, they had to go through a plan review process at the Department of Environmental Health. They had to pay a couple of hundred dollars. That, that fee ranged, I think, from a hundred and fifty dollars, maybe up to three hundred, four hundred dollars for some of these food trucks. So if you had a food truck from Pike County who paid, just for an example, a plan review fee to the local health department there in Pike County, maybe two hundred dollars for the plan review fee. If they wanted to come to Spalding County, they would go through another plan review fee, they would pay another couple of hundred dollars. If they wanted to go to Henry County, the same there, a couple of hundred dollars. They want to go to Fulton County, serve in Atlanta, same thing there, a couple hundred dollars. So every community they wanted to serve food in, they were required to get a local food service permit that required a lot of money and a lot of review process. So House Bill fourteen forty-three was in favor of our food trucks, became more food truck friendly for the state of Georgia. That does not require them to get that food service permit from each county. Now they've reduced that down to what is called a letter of authorization. So anytime they want to come in our community, they still have to go through Spalding County Department of Public Health to make sure that their base of operation is in good standing, that their mobile unit is in good standing and that they proceed with whatever their requirements are on the, on Spalding County's level as far as toiletry use agreement, letter of authorization from the property owner. So there's a lot that, that our Spalding County Health Department is doing as well. And Ms. Jamie Sims does a wonderful job over there at Spalding County. So currently, what we have now in place in the UDC in section five oh four F, we call this a temporary use permit. This goes for a lot of other sales, temporary use sales, but that's the only kind of category that we've been able to, to fit food trucks in. Currently now, we require them for the food truck owner to apply for temporary use permit. It's good for fourteen consecutive days, once a quarter. The cost is a hundred dollars. They have to provide a property owner authorization. And they have to provide our, our office with their food service permit and letter of authorization from Spalding County Health Department. So they'll have their county of origin food service permit, and then they'll have Spalding County's letter of authorization. And then, of course, we began doing fire marshal inspections a little over a year ago, I believe. Michael, our fire marshal, has been doing those for, for quite some time now. They get a little decal, they get inspected, and then they're good to go. When it all boils down to the math of that, that's a little over seven dollars a day. It doesn't offer a lot of variety for our community with a food truck and most of our food trucks. I don't want to speak for them, but the, the conversations that I have with many of them throughout the year is they don't really want to stay at the same place for fourteen consecutive is they don't really want to stay at the same place for fourteen consecutive days. Granted, the law, they have to go back to their base of operations every day, so it doesn't become a nuisance where they have to, where they stay there day in and day out. They have to go back to the base of operations, that's law. Um, but a a lot of our food trucks, they want the variety as well, as as some of my conversations with them have gone. Um, we're also with this hundred dollars not capturing a lot of the administrative costs uh for review that goes into these applications, and our code enforcement officers are um out in the field trying to regulate as best as they can.
I think one thing that's important to note with this as well, uh, this fourteen consecutive days once a quarter, too, that's tied to that specific property, so you're only allowed to do that's temporary use once a quarter at that property the way that it's currently written.
So if they want to go to another location within that time period, they have to pop another permit, pay an additional hundred dollars.
Yes. So, so it doesn't seem very feasible for our food truck owners. Um, but you all wanted a town hall meeting the last time that we met during workshop, and so we hosted a town hall meeting. Um, several of our brick and mortar businesses showed up and voiced their concerns. Some of their concerns were sales tax reporting. Um, the downtown businesses were concerned with distance to food trucks. Um, downtown parking, and our brick and mortars felt of all the overhead costs that they pay um to our community um and what it costs to run their brick and mortar, they were concerned with the temporary use permit being too low for fourteen consecutive days.
Isn't this just a restaurant?
Essentially.
So. Please, audience, please, keep our comments to yourself, not us. Thank you.
I don't understand why it's fourteen days, one one specific location, if it's in it within that jurisdiction, not helping understand why. But I think they serve all locations within you.
You got to look at where the, where it's located in the ordinance. So it's a temporary use, which is related to the property itself. So we're saying Walmart can have fireworks for fourteen days, because they're not a fireworks store. So when they come in and they want to have fireworks for sale, that's a different kind of use than they normally have, which makes it temporary. They can do that for fourteen days once a quarter. Same thing with a food truck. If you have, let's say, a vacant building somewhere, and you decide I want to put six food trucks out here, it's no longer a vacant building that used to be a doctor's office, it's now a food truck court. And so that use is not what the zoning potentially may have it as, and so it it's temporary in nature, which is why it's related to the property, not the person coming to the property. Which is the problem. We agree. It doesn't matter. You still zone private property.
And and there's an importance for having that language. That's why as now food trucks are coming, becoming more and more uh friendly, that's why it is important to now create some language specifically for them.
Right.
Cause it's this temporary use language is very cumbersome.
Well, it was in Spalding County. Is this the same serving fourteen days or?
No, so they they have a mobile food uh ordinance. Uh, so that's, so we, actually, this is a graph, uh, extra segue into that. I here I created this uh amazing research graph here, uh, roughly about eleven communities that we're researched from, uh, and then it shows it very different, you know, so you got the communities on the left, then across the top, you get to kind of showcase the various different uh elements of that town, and then those uh public buildings. So, uh, we took the. Like I said earlier, the one that we really started to kind of look at that seemed to kind of address, and it was kind of like a continual theme through a number of them. It seemed to get suited off.
Can we expand that? That graph, cause that brings it to the topic.
Yeah, it's kind of hard. Uh, I'm kind of starting from uh uh the left, um, moving right, it refers to like uh whether or not it's it's tied to commercial property, property owner authorization, fire marshal inspection, zoning verification, uh, proof of liability insurance, uh, occupational tax certificate, uh, D P H permit, uh, D P H letter of authorization, sale tax, uh, a scale drawing distance from uh restaurants or a distance requirement, rather, um, vehicle registration information, driver's licensing, hours specified, noise ordinance reference, gray water, uh, grease, uh, disposal, uh, indemnification of violations, appeal process, uh, and then uh permit attached to the uh unit. Uh, and then annual fee, daily permit fee, uh, length of permit, and then reference uh to sign, and so that's essentially kind of moving from left to right, kind of what, and so obviously, where you got those uh dots that are located there indicates that that's specific, so we can go many references that.
So we're looking to mimic Alpharetta.
That's the one that you look, yeah, that 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 we. Definitely.
Is there anything, is there anything on that graph mimicking Alpharetta that we would add to or delete from?
So.
Your recommendation.
Basically, like what we're doing is you you look at other communities, kind of see what they're doing. They've already kind of gone through a lot of the uh speed bumps, so to speak, and then you kind of borrow from that. But what we have done is is taken that verbiage and then are are tailoring it to our purposes. So it's not going to be a an exact verbatim live, you know, we kind of use it as a a as a structure, kind of based on actually looking forward, kind of start talking about this as, as we're going into this. Um, but to kind of establish uh essentially, uh, some good points of reference, but then we're going to kind of add in and make some changes, whether it be hours of operation, uh, distance requirement, zoning districts, uh, things of that nature, whether or not you can or cannot have tents, you know, uh, associated with uh the food trucks. Uh, things such as that. So the the first, the highlight here of that that it's provided, and this is one of the main things that Karen was speaking to with respect to the House Bill specifically, uh, that that would be a requirement with respect to the occupational task, when you've got fire marshal inspections, you engage these sort of other authorization, you engage uh certificate of liability insurance, sales tax affidavit. Uh, and then also, too, we've got a concern with respect to how we're going to trash and gray water, grease. The way that we're wanting to uh break up the ordinance, obviously, you have a purpose, and there's a definitions uh section that's tied to it. Uh, then we've got a a section that would be permit required. Uh, but then, uh, and the permit required would cover a lot of this uh static in here, but then after that, this is kind of where we get into, this is where really like between Cheryl and Karen and I, we'll start really bounce a lot of things back and forth, and admittedly, this is still in very draft form, so we're still kind of have uh, you know, we're going to have to make some tweaks before we come back to uh a clean draft one is uh to submit to you guys hopefully in April. Uh, but the next section of it would be operating plans, things that that will make sure that they're going to have to have things that they're going to have insurance of, so like uh, like under the permit, what we're recommending are uh that these can only be located within the P C D P I D institutional zoning districts only of private property. The idea of that is trying to balance the concern with respect to distance requirements that we're hearing from a lot of brick and mortar uh restaurants that were uh specifically going to downtown, so you can see here that that would include C B D, right? Uh, so it's hoping to kind of allow these, you know, out in that the P C D P I D and the institutional ones. Uh, so if that would help uh, authenticate the distance requirement, because you got to get a little authorization for the property one, you know, anyway, so then there would essentially be on board with that. Uh, and then it would also be on private property. Yes, a good point Karen said, you know, along the public ladder. Uh, so next thing that we're recommending, and it would be limiting to uh three days per month uh with a four days transpired in between operating periods per location. This is one that uh to the eleventh hour, it's that we're going to debating back and forth and this is another one I see as kind of going through a little bit of a continuing discussion, but the concern is it's giving them greater flexibility to allow to bring in, you know, like like Karen said earlier, we want to provide variety and options to the community to make this more accessible for uh food truck uh providers. But also, too, ensuring that these don't turn into pseudo food courts uh without us having that language in place. So that's why we're trying to kind of have an uh on like a middle ground uh with respect to that in terms of uh the operational aspect, and we're also too saying in the next goal, compared to the one in one food truck per class. Again, with the concern that these not turn into food truck courts right out of the gate. Um, the next uh section there that we're recommending is hours of operation. This was another one that we went back and forth on, uh, still having a lot of internal debate on, uh, but uh hours of operation being paid in. These different types of people. Like Karen had a great point yesterday, that's something specializing in uh breakfast. You know, type of meals that we showed you in that uh earlier this morning as well. Uh, so. Debateing that, or like, but that's the.
I got it.
Yes, ma'am.
This nine hundred dollars annually per parcel plus, I'm kind of confused. Is that, does this go back to the three days per month? Are you thinking that a food truck would want to stay at a the same parcel for the whole year, using their time? Is that what it means?
Yes, where essentially, if we added administrative fee cost, they would be saving money and have just one review process and get them a permit for three days per month for the entire year.
So instead of fourteen days a month.
And it would be at that location.
At that.
Uh, because you see it's broken down like twenty-five dollars a day or thirty-five dollars, you know, I'm just trying to kind of you know, again, you know, balance, you know, the concern that was mentioned about, you know, with respect to the fees, but also being trying to work with them to give them options, but.
Okay, so if I had a food truck and I pay nine hundred dollars annually, um, I could park my food truck at the same location three days a month for twelve months.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then what other, okay, besides that permit fee, I would have to be, follow all the the other regulations. So, um, now if you pay a one hundred dollars, you can use it for fourteen days.
Once, once a quarter.
One a quarter, once every three months.
Yes. And essentially, if you, if you had an agreement, uh, say with Walmart, they wanted to the first weekend of every month, this is for an example. They wanted to just do a customer appreciation day and have a food truck in the parking lot there. Um, if they contract with a a food truck and allow them to come the first weekend of every month, um, this allowing the the food truck to purchase the annual permit would save them about five hundred and fifteen dollars for the administrative cost.
Just in city, now if I, if I paid my my annual fee and I get my three, three days a month, and I decided to go out into the industrial park in the county a couple of days, would that have any effect on the city or?
No, you would be governed under this uh under Spalding County.
Uh-huh, they could get, I could, I could do Spalding County and still go somewhere.
Absolutely, and you can go next door and uh go over to the Belk Shopping Center and
You're going there.
And go from Walmart to Belk or whichever you choose to do.
Yeah, that would be the the same amount of dollars, but I still would only do it every day.
Nine hundred dollars would be.
That essentially gives you for that location.
It's a whole lot more regulation.
It, it actually, um, the way that we've talked it out is if if you come in per month and you want to do one day, that's twenty-five dollars for the permit, what we've recommended. Um, and then fifty dollar um administrative fee is what our department charges for administrative uh cost. Um, so one, one day would be seventy-five dollars. If you chose to do three days, it would be the seven, three days, seventy-five dollars plus the fifty, so one twenty-five per month. This nine hundred dollars annually, if it's something that we don't, don't like, I do, um, want to mention that if we end up having the administrative fee and the permit fee, this would essentially save our food trucks money if they had an agreement with the same location or same property owner to to come back as a repeat food truck every month.
So it can do it, but it has to be uh per parcel.
Yes, so it's trying to find a balance of the, because it's probably concerns of that the permitting causes the.
And then I, and I understand the permitting fee and the.
Also tries to.
So where's, like O T C, I saw occupational tax for La Grange. So they're paying a one-time occupational tax per year? Is there a way that we can?
Occupational tax is different than permits. So if you want to scroll back, Steve, to that um list.
The green screen.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I just. So like, the city of Stockbridge has O T C, and then fifty dollars a day, La Grange has O T C three days a week. It it doesn't give us any comparison of what.
It's a lot.
It is a lot of information.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out is what are other communities doing in regards to their fees in terms of their fee structure?
What I ask is. All the improvement that we've provided thus far, you guys okay with just, for now, is it going to be larger?
Well, I have a question also. Allowed, I know that, you know, for power protection. But can they provide you know, far or far ten away from the trucker, but people do.
So, here again, when I set this up, you know, this is purely for the food truck, not doing it as like a core this nation in the game, uh, you're concerning with tents and parks and things that make the stuff the kind of get very busy. Uh, so we are, uh, you know, they, so right now, saying no to tents and tars, that it is aligned for tables, that would be adjacent to the truck, you know, so that would make kind of way out of common use.
And uh, what about uh holiday? We have four days. Is there possible we could open three or four days?
We can anything right now as well, but.
Yeah.
Our recommendations are right now, and we're actually still in very much in draft form.
Don't say you got probably Saturday and Sunday. What we're thinking. But what if Monday is fall?
You you can make, if you want to do four days per month, that is, that is your choice. But I I don't know that I would say just for a holiday weekend, you're going to make it impossible to regulate, just say four days per month.
And we don't have to. To like, that's been the other internal conversation I'm having is setting this up, you know, and trying to make it sort of on a loop and try and.
I'm thinking.
If I, if I, if I purchase a park, um, the yearly park was purple. And I set up there about same location, like every time, uh, week or big month, five months. Then I decide that I want to go somewhere else. Have to buy another permit, or can I use that same one?
You got a different. You know, get another permit for each location, you know, just we've got parking required, uh, we, uh, take that to the one percent of the parking space, you know, everything, I assure that. Um, because there's a business that's operating there, that has parking required, so you know, each location is going to be slightly different from what it is, the type of business that they're doing, like in parking plants, uh, that are required, and also, we're having to look at that as well, too, because you know, actually the truck, if I got certain spaces actually applying, there'd be, there's huge places that would be better paid for the company. Uh, well, we want to make sure that they're not being taken away from the overall aggregate, that we're just talking to five persons to be willing to. So we're having to look at these on a on a location by location basis, too.
So it, again, if I I have my food truck, and I have a designated place, and I paid my nine hundred dollars, and I I I operated there for three months, and I feel feel like, well, this ain't really working out. And I found another place that that meets all the standards. I will still have to pay do it all over again and pay another nine hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am, and if you want to do it for a year.
For a year, you don't have a chain, that's just a little time theory.
So if you feel like you worked something out with that property, like I been on the media for a year, it's just to try to cut them a break. Uh, I think it's still do it on a per day basis or on a month per basis to kind of see if it's going to work.
Looking at city of La Grange, they got O T C and then three days each week. How how is La Grange is set up? What's their fee? What's the three days a week? That's on private property only?
Um, yeah, I'd have to do some more research.
We look at eleven.
I'm at this three days a month. We're talking three days. I miss.
But I I don't want to discourage the nine hundred dollars. I know that that's a a big fee, but if if you have an agreement where a lot of your food trucks, if if you follow them, sometimes they're going to be at a repeat location several times out of the year. Um, so that was just essentially to save them the cost from the administrative. But they don't have to get a nine hundred dollar permit just to be at a parcel. That's just for the food trucks who like to go to the same location every month.
So for somebody that that knows that they're going to be moving, it it will be to their advantage to just pay for.
per day.
Or whatever.
Per month, yeah.
If I decided if I, I was going to take it three months and then I felt like it wasn't working out and I decided to move somewhere else. Life would not be able to use that same permit with the same time on it, amount of time on it. Maybe for, uh, in the administrative here or something to change location.
Or get a list of locations that they in their in their per application.
I, I understand why that would be an issue because they'd be switching, they probably switch back and forth if it was already there. I, I understand what I was saying.
And it's also the regulation part with code enforcement. You know, we have to keep those guys in mind too, when they're out in the field regulating all of these food trucks, what suits our community best and what suits our code enforcement officers best as well.
One, one example that we've been trying to tie it to is like, we expect a temporary ban, uh, so force that, but when they're out there and feel the first thing that they look for in a temporary ban is a sticker. There's a little sticker that they give them in the permit tab. So many quarter, uh, for so many days, um, instead of they don't see that sticker and they're like, oh man, okay. You know, burn any place for this and it seems not, and we start. That's why I obviously like to do with the wide town, the permit attached fixed to the vehicle. It can be that nature, but often they just need to be served the court.
Kind of about, but most food truck locations operate in the cities, are they operating? How many days are we at, um, are at same location or different locations? Is it?
Right now?
We go into fourteen days.
Consecutive days, once a quarter.
Unless you have a special event downtown.
Like I said, some of the conversations that I have with food trucks, but their, their desire is not to stay in the same place for fourteen consecutive days. They have other gigs that they're going to, um, other festivals and stuff like that. So it would give them a little bit more flexibility to come in on month two and three. Um, and bigger mall.
And now when they're operating, they have to sign off or something saying where they're going to be, where they just go.
So, um, essentially what we're recommend, what we're recommending is when they get the occupational tax certificate, that's the time that we're, they only have to submit some of this paperwork one time. Where we're, uh, ensuring that they've had their city fire marshal inspection, that they have their base of operation and mobile unit uh, permit, and then they have a letter of authorization from, from Spalding County. Now that, that letter of authorization is going to change sometimes when they change locations. So that would be the one document per permit, wherever they're going to be located, that would have to be updated with Department of Public Health. Um, yeah, right now it's in briefs. Oh, yes.
Yeah, so that, that, that tend to be a big issue towards either store manager, the government, which is like. Usually when we find one of them, they're, now, you know, they don't have that information.
Before we approve this, would, would we have to have a public hearing?
No, yes. So we, we would bring a, uh, draft ordinance, we're, uh, we're proposing to put this, uh, in uh, the body of the order system, and it would be the first, second, third. Uh, but we would have to do, we, we talked about doing a suspensionary clause within, uh, section five or four. Uh, with the temporary use, that would exclude food trucks from that portion. That's within our use season, uh, that, that would be in terms of, uh, that portion.
And.
There would be a draft on the second.
And the closing time versus allowing it in the central business district?
Well, first of all, it's with the central business, it's, it's advanced, uh, there's not a lot of states.
But there is some.
Be dealing possibly with driveway, one problem. That the distance requirements has become a, a, a greater factor, like, will we then have to add in, you know, a, a distance requirement, that's especially a regulatory problem for us, uh, like when businesses have to apply for, um, alcohol licensing, uh, you know, they've got to provide a survey to establish that they're meeting on the distance requirements as it relates to local state law. Uh, so that'd be something that we'd have to figure out. I would measure that. And so that's, that was a concern that we had in, in respect to even gaining the decision.
Because that was a key term in town, of our downtown.
Yeah, it's trying to balance. And we get, it's, we're not going to do this perfectly. There, there's going to be some of a breed, you know, out of, and it's, um, side of a table that you sit on. That's what we're trying to find and get a, uh, meaning to be, you know, but it's, that was really the, the, the reason for not, you know, see such a business district at this time.
And, and part of the discussions for another day was going to include, um, mayor, what we talked about in our meeting last week about, um, potentially one of our parking lots of Nega for one day a week or multiple days a week and allowing our food trucks to be there, um, closer to downtown.
And if you keep in mind, this is part of the food truck individually and how the, the idea is to come back to y'all if you go courts, you know, and, and have a, a, a greater conversation, you know, with y'all, what they made at that point. C B D starts to come in a part of the conversation, you know, with the stuff. Again, this is, um, something that there's.
So I'd like to look at, I'd like to see, see, uh, look at city of La Grange is what they've got.
So mayor, I just looked that up on meeting code while we were here. Um, there isn't a fee within their ordinance. My guess is it's a fee schedule adopted by resolution, just like ours. We'll have to call and get that information. But it's clear that there's going to be a fee associated with it based on how they're, they're defining permit. Um, but they do allow one three days each week at a location, um, per, per calendar week. So that, that's what they've decided. Um, a lot of the rest of it is just exactly what they've identified here. Um, so it's in their commercial uses section, a quick.
That's probably the most liberal of the ones we've looked at, the most liberal.
In amount of time that you can, you can do it, I guess. I mean, I really don't know. City of Sharpsburg is one year. Does that mean they can just be open every day for one year? I don't, I don't know. We'd have to.
Again, like city of Alpharetta that you were mentioning, I see the hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know if that's per day, per, I mean, so just trying to understand what other communities are doing in terms of their food structures whereby figuring out whether the level playing field possibly.
No, we don't have public comment during workshop.
Ms. Rose, you have any question?
I do. And again, it, uh, while it stated that, um, the state really didn't require from you. The, the state requires a permit, uh, a food service permit, um, where, where House Bill fourteen forty-three changed some things. They're not required to have a food service permit in every single county that they serve food in. So that was very, very costly to them. Several hundred dollar plan review process in every county across the state that they wanted to serve food in. So that bill changed some things as far as the, the plan review process. And now they, they all pull from the same data pool where they can check the status of their base of operation and mobile, mobile unit status.
So the question around the airport line. They just have to basically pay that. Most of them are probably paying with that seventy-five dollar fee.
No, that's different. That's a special event.
The city of Brooklyn.
So again, this is where we sit. This is not, not necessarily a city sponsored event or a special event.
But we, we got the, the truck music event that's going to be on Saturday, April seventh, which will be down to part of six. I mean, meantime, we have a second Saturday event possibly with food trucks, so. I think you've enlightened us with more questions than we know what to ask right now. So possibly April twenty-third for the next workshop.
Yes, and just very quickly, Alpharetta is eight days in a month. Mm-hmm.
Does it show how, is that a hundred, the hundred and fifty dollar fee they're paying is for that per month?
Uh, uh, just again, a very quick scroll. I don't see.
That'll give us. So if we need to get a copy of the screen sheet sent to us so that we can, um, have it.
Yeah, and we'll try to, um, research more of the fee structure. Um, I did find, um, that when you call and get information, some of these are just so new and maybe practices that their office still isn't doing.
And to be clear, see what the fee, uh, and we, and the timeframe, like days, uh, the location is the biggest issue right now, but all of the other information that we've recommended is, is provided, y'all, you're okay with. Of course, you were boarding the draft for April.
Yeah, I can think of multiple places in central business district that potentially could fit, whether it's, I mean, the sock shop, the sock shop. Right.
To see how we start operating, uh, and you can always start to add.
You all good to keep working on it and come back next workshop? And try to finalize some final recommendations and then build the ordinance and vote on it. Hopefully you have it done this summer. Okay.
There's, there's one other question, uh, and we don't, I know they have a food truck park.
We're not there yet. We don't want to look at parks yet. We're talking about, um, one mobile food vendor, not a, not a park. So Thomason isn't listed on here either for that same reason. They have a, a food court. And so we, let, let's figure out how to deal with a food truck and then we'll, then we'll go there. But we'll, I think we can clarify some of the information now that we know what your concerns are. Um, and make this table a little bit more formatted for what the fees look like in different areas, how many days per month they are allowed and, and those kind of things and have a, a, another conversation in April.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you all for being here and we look forward to getting your constructive criticism and comments, um, on an individual basis.
And mayor, may I say, since they're here, I know that y'all have comments. We don't do comments at a workshop and we're not going to change our agendas to do that at this point. It wouldn't be fair for, for prior workshop events. But if you have comments, let us know. Come, schedule, schedule a meeting with Chad or Karen or myself that we can hear from you because we don't want to adopt something and then a month later try and have to go back and change it because we did not think about something because we don't operate these every day. Y'all do. So we would love to hear from you. Welcome your feedback, but if you will do that, um, by getting in touch with pain and development or myself, we will handle it that way.
Right, this time we're going to consider executive session pursuant to C G A's section fifty-four T two on the purpose of consulting in meeting legal counter change to pending potential litigation settlement claims administrative proceedings or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved pursuant to C G A's section fifty-fourteen three being one being for the purpose of authorizing negotiation to purchase, depose of, or lease property. Do we have motion? Mr. Tensive motion, second, uh, Mr. Wright, all favor, please join.
Oh, that's good.